Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Yesterday, a resident, Beth Clemmons, donated a 9/11 tree. Although it looks like a Christmas tree, it is a patriotic symbol of the first responder firefighters. In tribute to them and all the people who lost their lives or who were permanently injured, let us observe a moment of silence in their honor. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bassino?
Here.
Trustee Kryzminski?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda items. I know there was a couple of add-ons, Ms. Posey.
Just one. We have a proposed add-on for closed session to discuss the settlement of pending litigation, McComb County Circuit Court Case Number 2019-001502-CC. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other deletions or corrections to the agenda?
Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. We'll move on to approval of the bills. As usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills with the exception of vendor number 03461, which we will discuss and vote on separately tonight. And just so my colleagues are aware, this bill is on page seven of 148 on the Board Packet.
Anyone else?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the bills as presented excluding the one named by Mr. Bassino.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bassino to authorize payment of both bill runs with the one exception. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the previous meeting minutes, those being from August 28, 2019. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes of August 28, 2019.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The consent agenda items are routine matters that come before the Board. If you wish an item to be removed from the consent, please indicate at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Kryzminski to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Public comments are on the agenda next, and these are for agenda items only. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
I'm commenting on Agenda Items Number 12 and 13, which is the special districts for the street lighting. I reviewed this, and one of two things is occurring. Either the numbers aren't right as to the annual cost of the public municipal lighting, or we're paying a heck of a lot, four times as much, since we're stuck with the high-pressure sodium bulbs when our subdivision went in Phase One and Phase Two at Ultimate Farms. I'll do a FOIA to find out exactly what the basis is of these amounts, but basically breaking it down, two different numbers. On the street lighting assessment for Twin Rivers Subdivision Association, it's 33 units, it's $745. Works out to be $22.59 per unit, per lot. The second one, which is for the park at Legacy Estates Phase Three, works out to be 50 homes at $2,236, which is $44.72 per home. That's twice as much as the previous one. And both, well, we pay four times as much at Ultimate Farms. It's on our tax bill. And again, I want to urge the Board to relook at this policy because we're looking for some help in improving our efficiencies in Ultimate Farms. Now, the cost per pole seems to be correct from my research from several years ago at $952 per pole. So, that number seems to be right, but I don't know why one of the districts is half the price of the other one. And I do know why that one is twice, half the price of what we have because we are stuck with the high-pressure sodium bulbs. Thank you.
Very well, then, we will move on to public hearing. And the first one is for a new industrial development district for 23 Mile Road Industrial. Mr. Pierce?
Thank you.
I will open, excuse me, I'll open the public hearing at 7:10.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Before you, you have an application, excuse me, from 23 Mile Road Industrial. They wish, are wishing to establish an industrial development district so that future leases of the property would be able to establish a application for industrial facilities exemption. They've met all the requirements per state law, and I am recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions? This is pretty standard. We're just doing the district.
Do you want to close? Are you going to get some public comments?
I will close the public hearing. It is 7:11.
Madam Chair, if there's no discussion, I move on the resolution for 23 Mile, 081920005.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski, seconded by Ms. Posey. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bassino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. The next one is a public hearing and resolution for V&amp;G Industrial at 15804 Claire Court. I will open the public hearing. It is 7:12. Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, Board members. Pretty much the same issue, no development. They are establishing the industrial development district in order for future leases to be able to obtain industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Very well, then, I will close the public hearing. It is 7:13. Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll move on to the same item. New industrial development district for V&amp;G Industrial, 15804 Claire Court.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, call the roll.
Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bassino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Board members.
Thank you. Number 12 is a public hearing and resolution for street lighting special assessment district for the park at Legacy Estates Phase Three. I will open the public hearing. It is 12:14.
Sorry, 7:14. 7:14. What did I say, 12?
This is a regular street lighting assessment district?
Yeah, the developer owns all the lots.
And the developer owns the lots, very well. Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Van Tiflin, without having prior notice to the questions, are you able to answer some of the questions that Mr. Kuzmato gave to us this evening with regards to these?
It would take a little bit more math than I can do here. I'd have to go and look at the information that we received from DTE, but we put all the information that we received from DTE into the resolution. It does depend on how many lights are being proposed versus how many lots are in the development. So, you know, these are relatively small developments, and this is a corner of an existing development. So, it, when you have a small number of lots and a small number of lights, it does swing depending on whether you're adding, you know, five lights or six lights sometimes. The next one that's on the agenda, I'm sorry, this particular one is for a duplex condominium. So, there are a lot of units, you know, constant, more concentrated area, so the development is denser from a population standpoint, from a unit standpoint.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to follow up, Jim, on some of these, doesn't DTE just give us the numbers, and that's more or less what it's going to be?
It's for our standard light, you know, that the township adopted, I don't know, 15 years ago or so. So, but yeah, it, it's based on their current pricing, you know, for this, this year.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Very well, I will close the public hearing. It is 7:15. Are there any motions?
Madam? Who, who, you, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the street lighting special assessment district for the park at Legacy Estates Phase Three.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Kryzminski to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Madam Supervisor, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Bassino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. The next one is also for a street lighting special assessment district. This is for Twin Rivers Subdivision Number Two. I'll open the public hearing. It is 7:16. Mr. Van Tiflin, this is only a couple of lots, two or three?
Yeah, this is a very small portion of a subdivision. It's the second phase of the sub.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and again, the same question is that DTE is more or less tells us what that number is going to be, correct?
Yes, they give us the, the numbers, and we plug them into the resolution.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Then I will close the public hearing. It is 7:17. Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the special assess, the special assessment for the, for Twin Rivers Subdivision Number Two.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, call the roll.
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassino?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. Next, we have under new business from the Human Resources Department. This is a request to approve township offices' holiday closure. Mr. Sorkin.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, as has been done previously here at the township, the township offices have been closed between December 24th and January 1st each year. There are only three business days during that time period in which the office would be open based on the union contracts that supply the holidays. The, that's been dealt with in each of the appropriate collective bargaining agreements. There are exceptions that have been in the past. When the treasurer's office stays open one day during that time period to do that, and we've made arrangements for the personnel in that department. The fire department obviously has to have proper staffing and personnel, and the water and sewer department have people available on call in the event of emergency. All those have been dealt with, with the, with the individual units, unions, I'm sorry. So, with that, I ask for a motion to approve the closure of the township offices with the exception stated between December 24th and January 1, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question. Taxes for, will be during that time, or will that be moved on to February if somebody wants to pay them?
We have to be open one day during that time, by the end of the year. I think we chose to be open, no, I'm forgetting, I don't have my calendar.
25th is a Wednesday.
Pardon me?
25th is a Wednesday.
That's Christmas.
I think we're going to be open Friday.
Friday is the 27th.
Friday, yes.
27th?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I think it might.
Any other questions?
Might be the 30th.
Christmas is the 25th.
I know. Between Friday and Monday.
Every year.
I can't remember what our staff.
So, it's one of those days.
I forgot what our staff decided would be better for us.
Okay. I just wanted to make-
It'll be either Friday. Usually, we've always picked Thursday, but we don't want to do it the day after Christmas. So, it'll either be Friday or Monday. I will let you know at the next board meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we'll bring it up again.
I know.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
Hearing none, Madam Chair, I'll move on to recommendation of the holiday closure for the township hall of 1224 through 1120.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next, we have the clerk's office request for authorization to purchase electronic poll books in the amount of $37,650.50.
Ms. Posey? Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. In May of 2019, the State of Michigan released updated laptop requirements for our electronic poll books. McComb Township's current laptops do not meet state requirements moving into the 2020 election year. The Clerk's Department is requesting the Board of Trustees to approve the purchase of 50 laptops in the amount of $37,650.50. This purchase was anticipated and budgeted for through the capital improvement plan. I just want to note on this is that we received information today that although we're purchasing these laptops now, that we may be required to update the software before 2020, so we may have an additional amendment to this in the future, but we're not certain on that yet.
Oh, really? Already?
Mm-hmm. So, in the meantime, we need to get our laptops ready. So, I'm asking for approval.
One question. On the old ones, do they, is there any way we can get rid of them, or some other township?
Yeah, we're actually researching different avenues for that. We have, we've looked into schools that are looking for them, that can use them, and right now, we have two that are interested, so we're looking to recycle them that way.
Okay, because I was also thinking maybe some of the other townships up near the thumb or, you know, above that could use them also.
Yeah, well, they're going to have to update it to the state requirements as well.
No matter what, okay.
Yes, so they don't really have a choice.
All right. Thank you.
It's expensive, as we put in here, it's expensive to try and refurbish the laptops. It's not worth it.
Not worth it, correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Posey.
Anyone else with questions?
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I would move on to purchase the new electronic poll books in the amount of $37,600?
Support.
And 50 cents.
And 50 cents, okay. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bassino to purchase the electronics poll books as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have water and sewer, and this is a request to approve pay construction estimate number three, 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining in the amount Mr. Wangler?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. This will be pay cert number three. As you've already stated, this will be payable to Incitroform Technologies in the amount of $98,756.24. The water and sewers reviewed this as well as engineering. We are recommending we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wangler?
No, no, ma'am. On the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Superintendent and the Engineering Department, I move to pay the bill in the amount of $98,756.24.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey to pay the construction estimate number three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next is a pay construction pay estimate number four, and this is for sanitary sewer cleaning and TV investigation. This amount is $105,786.23. Mr. Wangler?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. Again, a similar request, pay cert number four. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $105,786.23, and similar comments. Both departments have reviewed this, and we're recommending we approve this. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to pay construction pay estimate number four in the amount of $105,786.23.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to pay the construction pay estimate number four. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a request for payment to McDowell and Associates for the Country Club Drive sanitary sewer soil investigation, and this is in the amount of $6,310. Mr. Wangler again?
Again, thank you, Board members. A while back, we had, we had board approved the Country Club sewer repair, and, and the first, some of the first steps in getting this repair going were soil borings, and that's what this invoice is about. McDowell and Associates were the low bidder and have performed soil borings for this upcoming project, and this invoice is for $6,310. And again, both departments have reviewed this, and we're recommending we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move on to recommendation of, of the engineering and water and sewer individual for, to pay this in the amount for, of $6,310.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to pay this invoice as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next is the Engineering Department, and this is to approve the release of easement for utilities within private roads and alleys in pheasant-run condominiums Phase One. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the Board. In this particular development, the, a new developer took over the project and decided to approach the township about removing an alley from the south end of the, of the development to make it a more desirous place for property owners. So, that was approved by the township board. It has since been removed. This particular development was under construction at the time that it changed hands, so we no longer need the easement at this point. So, we have reviewed it, and the township attorneys reviewed the document, and we're recommending approval.
Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
I'll make a motion to approve the release of the easement for utilities within private roads and alleys in pheasant-run condominiums Phase One.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve this release of easement for utilities within private roads and alleys. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to authorize the supervisor to sign stormwater quality treatment system operation and maintenance agreement for Clinton-McComb Public Library, North Branch. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the Board. This is a typical stormwater agreement, operation and maintenance agreement that we have developers enter into with the township. This protects us if we, for some reason, have to enter the property, they're not maintaining it properly, and it becomes a health, safety, welfare issue. We have the ability to enter the property and maintain it and backcharge the property owner if there's an issue. This particular one is for the library that's being constructed across the street. We're recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions about this item?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I'll make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the stormwater quality treatment system operation and maintenance agreement for Clinton-McComb Public Library, North Branch.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to sign the stormwater quality treatment system. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on non-agenda items.
Are you going to address the bill that was pulled from?
What's that?
Mr. Bassino pulled a bill from the bill run for approval, for discussion.
Actually, Ms. Goodhue made the motion to pay the bills absent of that, and that's what we voted on. It was different than my motion to pull it and discuss it. Ms. Goodhue said to pay the bills absent of the bill that I mentioned. So, I'm not sure if we have to discuss it at this point.
Still on the agenda?
Yeah, it's still on the agenda.
No, it's not. I, I made a motion to keep it on the agenda. Ms. Goodhue made a motion, which I supported, to pay the bills except for the one that I mentioned.
Well, I was assuming we were going to discuss it because I'm not even sure what the bill is.
Right.
Right, but I made a motion, and you made another motion.
Well, I apologize. You didn't correct it at that time.
So, I supported your motion, so I didn't, I, I had questions about the bill. You made a motion to pay the bills absent of the one I said not to. The motion that you made did not say that we were going to discuss it any further.
The motion was made to, was to pay all of the bills other than the one that you pulled from the agenda.
Correct.
So, the agenda-
Correct, and that's what I supported, and that's what we voted on. So, I mean, we can re-present this bill at the next meeting then and discuss it.
It's on this agenda as part of the bill run.
We've pulled bills before and not paid them. I made a motion that was not supported, and then another motion was made to pay the bills absent of the bill of the vendor I mentioned. That, that's what we voted on, and we can go back and look through it, and, and let's re-present this bill at the next meeting. We did not vote, the motion that I made is not the motion we voted on. A separate motion was made to vote on the bills absent of that bill, so let's re-present it at the next bill run.
Madam Chair, to be clear, I, I'm not aware of any motion tonight to remove that particular bill from the agenda as it was already presented.
Ms. Goodhue made the motion to pay the bills minus the vendor Mr. Bassino spoke of.
Wanted to discuss. I assume we were discussing it. I assume we were discussing it.
But that's not what we made the motion to vote on. I mean, we, we can talk about it right now, but that's not, I think we, I think we're going to have to go back in this meeting and look at the minutes and, and clarify what the motion was. And this bill can be presented next meeting, we can discuss. But that's not what we voted on. I made a motion that was not supported, then you made a motion to pay the bills absent of the vendor in the bill that I talked about, without any discussion. That's what happened.
Madam Chair, if I may, I took it as we're going to discuss this bill right now, not, it was absent of this bill to discuss it. That's how I took it, and that's what I voted on, Mr. Busno.
That's, that was my motion, which wasn't supported. Ms. Goodhue made another motion to pay the bills absent of the vendor that I talked about. I would love if my motion was supported. It wasn't. That's not what we voted on. So maybe as a board, we should go back. Why can't this bill be re-presented next meeting then? My bill, my bill was to take it off, and my motion was to vote for the bills and discuss it. Nobody supported that. Ms. Goodhue made a motion to pay the bills minus of the vendor that I talked about. There was no mention of discussion. You voted on that. You didn't ask clarification at that point either.
It was understood that we're going to discuss it later. This is your opportunity to discuss that bill, Mr. Busno.
My, my motion was never supported to discuss it later. Ms. Goodhue ended up making a motion that I supported.
Madam Chair.
Why can't you just, why can't we just talk about it, Mr. Busno?
Because we made a motion and we voted on it.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Generally, when an item is removed in the motion, it is placed back on the agenda on a, as a numbered item. That didn't transpire for whatever reason. So I, I, I don't know if it's in our best interest to wait and look at it at the following meeting, because that didn't transpire. I'm uncertain of that.
What was the page number, Mr. Busno? And what was that item number, Mr. Busno?
What was the motion, Mr. Krasinski, by Ms. Goodhue?
All right, all right.
What was the motion?
You know, you're, you're in a-
I, I, I actually stated it, when, when I talked about it, when I made my motion. Did you support my motion that wanted discussion? No. Nobody up here supported it. A new motion was made by Ms. Goodhue to pay the bills absent of the vendor that I talked about. That's what we voted on. I would have loved if somebody supported my motion, which I said it was page seven of one forty-eight. I mentioned that clearly. Go look at the tape.
Mrs. Don.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I did think that we would be discussing it today. So I don't know, perhaps a snafu happened with not seconding it or whatever, but I was just under the impression, I think, as was Mr. Krasinski, that we would be discussing it tonight, and, and-
But that's not what we voted on. Nobody supported my motion to discuss it later. That's not the motion that was made and voted on.
Okay.
Madam Chair, somebody could certainly make that motion right now.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we discuss the item that was, the bill that was pulled.
Jeez o' Pete's? Did you just say that? Jeez o' Pete's to me.
I didn't say it to you, Mr. Busno.
Jeez o' Pete's. Our, our General Counsel was going to say Jeez o' Pete's.
I second the motion.
There was a motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers, to discuss the bill in question. Mr. Busno, would you care to comment?
Okay, two other people just made the mo, but I, I will. I did my due diligence to prepare to vote on the bills tonight. When I requested an itemized invoice for this bill from our Finance Director, which is common practice, I was told one did not exist. I further learned that the law firm requesting this bill stated on their invoice that the itemized bill was attorney-client privilege, which is highly unusual. I would like to make a motion that this Board with a roll call vote that they feel attorney-client privilege needs to be invoked. If so, then the Board will table the vote to pay this bill so Board members can review documents or receive guidance that proves an attorney-client relationship stipulation exists in relation to paying invoice to vendor zero-three-four-six-one in the amount of three thousand, five hundred, sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And I, and, and I can restate that motion. I've never seen a bill like this. I, I have consulted people. I want a itemized invoice. The invoice from, the attorney says that it's attorney-client privilege confidential, and detailed investigation billings are available on request. So now I have to go to that law firm to find out what they're charging us for? Well, this bill was approved on eight-twenty-seven by our Supervisor. I, I am very, very confused. I've tried to get outside guidance, I've talked to people in government, I've talked to legal councils. They've never heard of such a thing where that an itemized invoice is attorney-client privilege. If this Board wants to invoke it, we can vote right now to invoke attorney-client privilege. And if you want to do that and pay that bill, then that's what we'll do. So why don't I do this? Why don't I make a motion that this Board vote with a roll call that they feel attorney-client privilege needs to be invoked to pay this bill?
Madam Chair, may I? We don't have an itemized statement? It just, an amount?
I do, I have.
Oh, okay.
I have an itemized statement. I was advised by the attorney in question that it was attorney-client privilege, and I asked for a revised bill to just give a lump sum. Mr. Busno, if you would like to see the whole bill, you can come into the office and I'll show it to you.
Well, I, I would love that. That's not what I'm asking right now. Do, do, I am asking for a motion that this Board vote with a roll call that they feel attorney-client privilege needs to be invoked to pay this bill. That's what I'm asking right now. So I want to make a motion that this Board vote with a roll call vote that they feel attorney-client privilege needs to be invoked to pay vendor number zero-three-four-six-one in the amount of three thousand, five hundred, sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Busno, included in that motion, are you asking for the Board to be able to see an itemized statement?
I mean, if it's attorney-client privilege, I think we're the client, we should see that.
I agree with you, okay, thank you. I would second his motion then.
Madam Chair, I, I get a caution from the Board. I, I don't believe the Board can invoke the attorney-client privilege. The attorney-client privilege either exists or it does not exist. A vote of this Board to invoke it would make no sense, and I think would lead to confusion of the minutes and any further action. The attorney that supplied this bill, which involved the investigation, felt that it was subject to the attorney-client privilege. So, but that certainly means that all the Board members can see what's on there. It's just a matter of whether or not that gets disclosed to the public. And generally, it's not uncommon for attorney bills to a Board to be subject to the attorney-client privilege, especially in the employment area where there's an investigation employee, and the detailed information that's contained in the bill can be considered subject to the attorney-client privilege. It's a very common practice, for instance, when there is pending litigation, so that the other side can't FOIA the, the invoice to find out where the individual is going, you know, where the Board is going with their, with their legal strategy. So I would just caution you to vote on something that invokes the attorney-client privilege, because again, I don't think the Board has the authority to do that. It either exists or it doesn't exist. You can certainly vote to waive the attorney-client privilege, but you can't, I don't, I'm not aware of any law or precedent that would establish that you can invoke the attorney-client privilege.
Madam Chair, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that the General Counsel's actually given us legal advice tonight, because, you know, I appreciate that. Attorney-client privilege, the client is the Board.
Correct.
The client's the Board. How can that attorney invoke that without, so maybe we should table this. Until we can look at the documents.
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Would you like to amend your motion then?
Yes, I would like to motion, make a motion to table paying of the bill of vendor zero-three, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
What's that? I'm, I'm sorry, okay. So I'd like to mo, make a motion to table paying the bill of vendor zero-three-four-six-one until the Board can decide, or until the Board has a chance to review the documents.
I would second his motion.
Motion by Mr. Busno, seconded by Ms. Smith.
Is that correct?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Now we will go on to public comments. This is on non-agenda items. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
Frank Kuzmato, one-six-one-eight-eight, Jenny Drive. Motions matter, things that are said matter. There's a reason why procedure exists. It exists so that there is a rock-solid foundation so that the people know what happened while reading the minutes. So whatever you took it as, there was a motion, you're presumed to know what you're saying and mean what you say, and it was voted on. I congratulate Trustee Busno for trying to hold the Board to a higher standard rather than sloppiness and just fly by the seat of the pants. You are voting on massive contracts, including water, sewage, and contracts with regards to a whole panoply of, of services, of government functions. You are fiduciaries, you are gatekeepers of the public treasure. Now, this bill, and I don't know why it's all wrapped in shrouded mystery, it's Kirk, it's Kirk and Huth bill, and-
Madam Chair, if I may, just to interrupt you. This is a non-agenda item. You seem to be talking about this on, I don't understand that. Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, I thought it became an agenda item when you put it back on the agenda.
No, no, it's, she just stated it was a non-agenda item. If you want us to follow the rules like you stated, she is following it, it's a non-agenda item. So are you going to be talking on something, non-agenda item, not on this? I'm just stating something.
I'm sorry, are you the Chair?
Am I, am I true?
Are you the Chair, Trustee?
No, I'm not.
All right, I can be-
I'm, I'm just asking.
Be instructed by the Chair, but as far as I know, there's no parliamentary rule in Robert's Rules of Order, which allows a member of the public body with a Board to interrupt a public speaker during his time-
Point of information, I can do it that way, Mr., Mr.-
I appreciate that.
Okay.
But it seems like we twist and turn and go every which way, whenever, whatever suits a particular purpose, which is very troubling as a taxpayer of this township.
Mr. Kuzmato, one, one second. Mr. Van Tifflin, will you reset the timer? Or, James?
I, I'm concluding, Madam Chair.
Starting.
I'll also indicate that the, the matter that's going for decision by the Board into closed session, or no decision, a status of litigation is a lawsuit that was filed on my behalf regarding the, going into closed, I'm sorry, not closed session, going into the interviews and denying the public comment. I believe that's the case. That was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. This is, continues to be a problem. I suggest that the Board take courses or seminars and refresh your courses for Open Meetings Act so that the law, compliance with the law is, is attained. Thank you.
John Parkinson, address is on file. I just want to make a comment about trash for the residents of the McComb Township. You folks have a committee put together for, to review trash haulers, and I would implore you all to consider the residents, as we have to pay that bill too. A local township or city, New Baltimore, has switched over to a waste hauler called Priority, and it's not saving them much. So when you guys consider our trash hauling, and GFL is actually finally getting their stuff together, and I understand, and I applaud them, it takes time to get stuff, you know, right. And with numerous calls from the residents, I understand that it's, it's finally getting to where it needs to be. And I'm happy with GFL at the current time. I'm not sure about the other residents, but looking at New Baltimore, a lot of the residents are not happy with Priority. And they're leaving trash on the ground and other, other, other things. And the cost, the cost difference is, is minimal as far as savings. So I would implore you all to just consider that when you, when you decide on trash hauling and consider the residents as well. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Western. I want to express appreciation that the ZBA and Planning Commission meetings are now available online and on the cable channel. And if you need examples of well-run meetings, sit down and watch those meetings. It would be a good example for how meetings should be run. Also want to comment on what happened earlier with the first speaker, because I have run into this before with this Board, and the difference between agenda items and non-agenda items. And I think sometimes the intention of the non-agenda portion gets distorted as to prevent people who are waiting to speak to an agenda item, and to distinguish it for them. And when I ran into it before, it was very similar to what the first speaker ran into tonight. We wish to come up and comment upon something that happened within the meeting, such as that Kirk-Huth bill. We could not have commented on that because it hadn't happened yet, and the principles of physics would apply. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Very well, we will go on then to Board comments. We'll start off with trustees.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I do have a comment this evening. I'd like to bring interested people up to date regarding my promise to talk with all twenty-two union members, union employees, excuse me, who signed the document after Patrick Maher resigned to accept a position with Washington Township. So far, I've spoken to nine of the twenty-two employees. It's going slowly, but sometimes the meetings last a lengthy amount of time. After speaking to one department head a week, a week ago, I vowed to look into the promise made during contract negotiations, namely, every employee who had to hire legal representation for their testimony at the grand jury in the Dino Bucci indictment would be made whole. After speaking with legal counsel, I was told that could not happen until the investigation is complete and everyone is cleared. So that, hopefully, the trial will happen in January, and we can move on this and make our employees whole. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. First of all, I, I would like to express gratitude for having a moment of silence for September eleventh today. As a educator, I actually made a social media post today that, you know, the, the kids I teach in high school were not even alive when September eleventh happened. And we, we must never forget, we must, we're still, still dealing with the effects of September eleventh. So I really appreciate that we had that moment tonight. I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight before I comment on something that was said. I, I do want to thank department heads, employees. I'm not full-time, I'm not down here every day, I'm not at the department head meetings on the Monday before, but I do do my due diligence in asking questions. And again, I want to thank you for answering my questions. I don't have anybody that doesn't take my phone call or doesn't call me back as soon as I can. And sometimes it's not always easy, me being a teacher, I have to kind of play some phone tags. So I just want to thank everybody, and you know who you are, for answering questions for me when I have them. The one thing I do want to address was a comment made tonight about Open Meetings Act. I would love, you know, I, there was a comment made about having a refresher course in Open Meetings Act. And it's given me an idea. Maybe I go out into the community and, and maybe invite some Board- Maybe I go out into the community and, and, um, maybe invite some board members, gotta make sure we don't have quorum there, or if they want to run it, they can too, about some refreshers on Open Meetings Act. We s- we continue to run into those issues, and some residents have contacted me about some things that have given me pause and made me reflect on, uh, maybe some other things that we're doing. And I think it's a great idea. Open Meetings Act is law. I'm a law teacher. I teach it to my students. I think it is, um, very, very important that we follow law. And, um, you know, that might be actually a good idea. Uh, Mr. Kuzmato brought it up. Maybe to have some kind of community event, maybe here, maybe in town hall, and talk about Opens Meetings Act, what it is, who it applies to, the committees it applies to. It doesn't apply just to this board, it applies to committees of this board too. And, um, that might be a very, very good idea to have some kind of community refresher on, um, the, the Xs and Os of, uh, Open Meetings Act.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to make a statement that, um, or prayers for the troops that are, that are off fighting in other countries so that we don't have another attack like on 9/11 that happened in the United States. I would like to thank the people that are out there for their watch, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Then we will go on to treasurer's comments.
Saturday is September the 14th, and it is normally the last day to pay your summer taxes without penalties, but because it falls on a Saturday, we are, uh, go to the next business day, which is Monday. So for those people who like to wait to the last day, September the 16th, you get an extra bonus. Will, the penalties will go on on September the 17th. Anything that's put in the drop box over the weekend will be postmarked for the day before, as well as anything put in the drop box on Monday will be postmarked for the 16th and will not be considered late. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's comments.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The clerk's office will be mailing a letter to all registered voters that are not currently on our absentee voter list. This letter offers voters the option to vote by mail in four convenient ways to get on our list. You can complete the form and return by mail to the clerk's office, take a picture of the completed form and email to the clerk's office, text MTCLERK to 555-888 and complete the process, or simply call my office at 586-992-0710, extension three, and request to be placed on the list. By completing the form, you'll be added to the clerk's mailing list and automatically receive an absentee voter application, application for a ballot. You must complete the application and return to my office before the mail-in ballot can be issued. If you choose to vote in person or not at all, you have the option to dispose of the application. No more stress trying to get to the polls on election day and avoid potential lines at your polling location and utilize the no reason mail-in voting in 2020. Also, we have good news for our pickleball lovers. Parks and Recreation has listened to your concerns, and they are preparing temporary courts over at Macomb Corners Park. They should be available, weather permitting, by next Wednesday for use in the fall. So I hope all those that were searching for the pickleball courts this fall will utilize them in the short period of time. And lastly, to all the heroes, uniform or no uniform, and to all the families that will forever be changed by September 11th, we will always remember. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have two reminders for you. The first one is, uh, free paper shredding and electronics recycling event. It will be held on October 5th from 9:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. here at Macomb Township Hall. We are in, doing this in conjunction with GFL, and it is free to all residents. That is just a reminder, it's usually at the senior center, but with the construction of the new fire station, we just can't have it there, so it will be held here. Uh, the other one is the Act 345 Pension Fireman, uh, pen, Fire Pension System. This is the board that oversees the full-time firefighter's pension accounts. Applications for the open position are available on the township website. To be eligible, the candidate must be a resident, be available for a four-year term, and be able to attend quarterly meetings during business hours. The deadline for applications is 4:30 p.m. on September 20th. In addition to, uh, all the celebration, well, not celebrations, but, uh, recognition of 9/11, today I attended the Patriot Walk at Lutheran High North, and there were over 540 students, all dressed in red, white, and blue. And it was wonderful to see that many people come together, and they were gonna walk from the, uh, football stadium out to the field that runs along Romeo Plank. And they, uh, collect money for, uh, different organizations, but mostly goes to the homeless in Macomb County. So if you ever get a chance to see it, you need to come and walk with the kids, they're very patriotic, and it was wonderful to see that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of the clerk? How many, has your absentees increased since we started this?
Yes, we've, uh, kinda did a, um, campaign at the concerts in the park. We were allowing people to sign up there. We've also, um, added a form to our website to make it, uh, you can just go on the website and add it to the list, so we are increasing. But the county has told us to anticipate a 30% increase in 2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought that'd be good for the, if it has increased, cool.
All right. We have two, uh, items to discuss in closed session. If you would make a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Ordered by Mr. Krasnabinski to be, uh, reviewed in closed session. All in favor signify by saying aye. Or, I'm sorry, roll call with that.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzminsky?
Yes.
Trustee Busno?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
We are adjourned for closed session. We have returned from closed session. There are two items that we discussed. First one was number 25, uh, to discuss the status of pending litigation. Are there any motions on this matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. The motion is authorize legal counsel to resolve litigation as discussed.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Kuzminsky. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the last one was closed session to discuss settlement of pending litigation. Are there any motions in this regard?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize legal counsel to resolve litigation as discussed.
Motion by Mr. Busno?
Support.
Ordered by-
Goodhue.
Ms. Goodhue? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kuzminsky to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and we are adjourned.